Ms. Spohler.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coe.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Palastrell, here. Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Palastrell.
All right, so if you're able at this time, please rise. We would like to make this.
But we just.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The meeting, Mr. Edges, is there a good sign of speed?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Schrauf from the first district, and I believe she has a guest who she'd like to introduce. The votes are still in play.
Good evening. This is Janie Herman. She's one of my board members. We made a difference to talk about our community recreation plan. One, I wanted to come this evening and talk to you all. I talked to several other boards, just to inform people and share our process and where we're at with our new community recreation center. So in a public engagement process that started in 2024, a new recreation facility design was created. This seventeen thousand six hundred and seven square foot recreation facility fits within the general obligation bond budget limitations, not to exceed the total debt capacity of the park district, which is two point eight seven five percent of the equalized assessed valuation. In short, the amount of funding that can be issued based on this percentage is not to exceed thirteen million. Therefore, the facility size and project expenditures, not only the building itself, but the mass grading, seating, interior fixtures, phones, registration software, et cetera, are estimated to fit within this budgeted amount. Included in this new design is a four thousand square foot multipurpose space that will be used for recreation programming such as dance or paint nights, senior programs, summer camp, and outside group rentals such as the scouts, private organizations, or community members, with a kitchenette on one side and a divider to separate this four thousand square foot space into two. It also includes an eight thousand square foot gymnasium with a walking track with striping for pickleball, basketball, and volleyball, a two thousand square foot fitness center, a child's play area, one office and customer service desk, restrooms, both interior and exterior, for events, programs, and summer camp, hallways and storage areas. And also included in the design is outdoor space that can be used for social events, recreation, summer camp, or for fun programs for all ages, such as a pickleball tournament. Just so I want you guys to know, this design does not include the administration offices as we felt the space the residents were asking for was a priority. We have been operating since 2023 at 182 South State Street in an effort to provide more programming space for our growing little people playtime, preschool, and daycare programs, now known as LPPSE. The goal of this facility is to create healthier, safer, and more enjoyable experiences for our residents, expand and improve programming, enhance ADA accessibility, extend the number of months that certain district amenities can be enjoyed, and protect property values. The Community Recreation Center business plan first looked at similar providers within a twenty minute radius and determined that the park district can also play a role in expanding the overall market for recreation, fitness, and wellness services. The plan goes into further detail by focusing on major programs and services, admission, membership, and sponsorships, to ultimately provide us with a pricing strategies to operate as a self-staining facility. The operational strategy provides days of operations, hours and closures, along with staffing required, including a proposed organizational chart. A pricing model strategy aims to balance accessibility, revenue generation, and cost recovery. This is the Community Recreation Center business plan, and this can be found using the QR code on the back of the sheet that was given you. It is on our website and includes all that information. But a part of this study, the demographics and trends analysis, provides insight into the makeup of the population they serve and identify market trends in recreation. This is the who and what of the plan, determining who we serve and what they want to do. Participation by generation, top sports, and core versus casual trends in sports that are allowed and are outlined in the business plan. Through the analysis of all the information gathered, this document takes the entire picture and provides a pro forma revenue model and a pro forma expenditures model. Based on the space provided, programming recommendations, and fee structure, the building would show a net revenue of one point six percent that then would be put into a capital project fund for future repairs or expansion of operations. The Park District Board of Commissioners have voted to place a referendum ask on the November fifth, 2024 ballot. Additional FAQs can be found using that QR code on the Park District website. Thank you for your time, and I can take any questions, or you can also contact me if any questions you have.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. Edges, is there anyone else signed off?
No, there isn't.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. For you, you have the meeting minutes from October third, 2024. Please review them at this time. Any changes to the minutes? And then I'll entertain a motion approving the minutes as they are presented.
So moved.
Questions, comments, and/or concerns?
I just wanted to thank the clerk for noting under number eleven, trustee Palastrell is devastated that this week. I thought he would like, I was.
With the first and the second, I am going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
I'm staying.
And.
I've already said good evening to you, but I'll say it again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to all of you. At this time, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a variance for 115 Arrowhead Drive for a front yard setback to construct a restaurant. You may recall that the same company was in just two weeks ago with a gravel variance, but the same gentleman here, including the gentleman who will be operating the restaurant, who's currently operating the food truck up at the hotel, and I handled that this week. It's excellent. Highly recommended. With that, I'll turn it over to voting. Do the planning commission listen.
Good evening. The planning commission, Hall of Public hearing on this matter in September twenty third, recommended approval by a vote of forty-three. The conversation around the vote was whether it should be a front yard setback or parking number of parking stall variance. So they're going back and forth whether they should reduce the number of parking stalls or reduce the setback. Ultimately, the planning commission decided to recommend approval of the front yard setback variance, thinking that arguing or stating that it's not going to add bulk to the front of the street and presence to the restaurant so it's more visible from the street. Staff recommended approval of this variance. The reason why staff didn't want to go with the varies for the number of parking stalls, we want to have as many parking stalls available for the rest, people that sit down in the restaurant, people that are staying at the hotel versus reducing that amount and then having a setback at twenty-five. So that was a discussion. Either of us, forty-three, is split, but it was recommended approval by a vote of forty-three by planning, zoning commission. If there's any other questions, I can answer them.
Just like to point out on page twenty, you have some nice color renderings of the sod. Very nice looking.
Professor, what is the speed limit on Arrowhead Drive?
Page nine, off the top of my head, but I'll let me check.
Okay. Speed limit, because if people are driving super fast, the distance is.
Oh, I get it.
But I was just wondering.
I believe that's a thirty-five mile an hour speed zone. I believe that's where it is.
Okay.
I would want to be, have that verified, but I believe this way.
I'm on your, I'm on your team with this one. I think it's thirty-nine.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so you know, from the street to the building, it's approximately twenty-five feet also. I mean, we had a twenty-five foot setback. Currently, we're trying to get to ten, we still get twenty-five feet to the street. So.
I did notice that in the records.
And our architect, by the way.
Yes. Hi, everybody.
Question, is this an addition to, like, an addition being built onto the current hotel structure in the drawings, or is it a separate building right next to the hotel?
It's actually a separate building with a breezeway.
It's like it's stories.
What's that?
Three months.
Oh.
Breezeway be where that outdoor seating looks to be in bottom center.
Yeah, we created about a twelve foot separation between the hotel. Okay. And the restaurant itself, create a breezeway through there. Anything smaller than that starts getting more of an alley, you want to get some seating in there. And as you turn the corner, we're kind of, we would like to get all the seating as close as we can to the street and create a little walkway area there, make this a relaxed area for you.
So anyone have any additional questions or concerns?
You said the only issue with that planning and zoning had was the loss of parking stalls, basically.
Yes, the discussion on whether the petition should come back for various number of parking stalls. Commissioner, do I maybe argue that someone staying at the hotel would most likely often be a patron of the restaurant, too? You don't need double parking for one for utilizing both businesses. So that was the biggest discussion, whether they should come back for a various number of parking stalls.
Okay, so no other major concern. Thank you.
I could ask the chief, too. I mean, do you see any safety issues with it being that close to the street?
No.
You know, the street well enough with traffic anyway, so you're.
Yeah, there's not that much, there's not that much traffic on it.
If we add the restaurant on and the hotel gets beefed up, do you think that could make you change your mind on that?
I don't, I mean, not, not as far as a safety concern, no. It's still a dead end. Very limited business time.
And the businesses that are back there, I mean, there's, you know, employees that come there during the daytime and leave, and that's about it. So, yeah, I don't think.
Okay. Thank you.
There was a question at the last meeting about turning radius for fire trucks. We've referred that to Mohammed as well, so.
I'm sorry.
About turning radius for fire trucks and the whole parking lot, and we demonstrated that there shouldn't be an issue with that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no additional questions, I'll entertain a motion approving an ordinance for the variance for 115 in Arrowhead Drive.
So moved.
Second, questions, comments, and/or concerns? Mr. Mayor, please.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Spalastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You're not required to stay, but you're welcome.
What time would this get over, about ten?
Depends on how many books.
I might take some of that cake.
I'm not.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I would like to stay, but I'm going to step away. Thank you.
We would ask your consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Palm County regarding animal control services. Some of you may remember that three years ago, we did the same thing. Metro West negotiates this on our behalf, and then we endorse it. So it's a pretty standard agreement. If you have any questions, I'll send that in.
This is the same agreement that all the other communities in King County are passing as well, just so that you know. If you look at the language in that, this was vetted and approved by the Metro West Legislative Committee and animal control. So it's similar to what we passed three years ago.
Does this still not include any services for cats? It's just dogs, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, I mean, King County doesn't really mess with cats, to be honest. They don't.
Unless it's an animal cruelty situation.
Right. And I mean, and it's funny, because as you talk about that, I mean, you go down rabbit hole, I mean, like, there, even with raccoons and stuff, they have to be at a certain stage before animal control will do anything. So, I mean, so anyway.
Yeah. Just making sure I.
The, yeah, let's see, it's pitch thirty-five, number eight, effective date termination. It's got the date of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. It says it's a two year, two years from the date approved, and that's actually three years from the date, but then it says with a one-year renewal option, which I understand that we're having. When is that renewal? So it kind of just goes two years?
Two years plus a one year.
Plus a one year, but it's listed for the three. So you have that option to go.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm going to be completely transparent. I don't think the police department has any, any interest in becoming the dog catcher, so.
We already do.
No, I know, I understand that, but.
Horse catcher, cow catcher.
Right.
We just try, we just try, we try, actually try to avoid calling animal control. I mean, if we can get the dog, we will spend some time trying to find the owner.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that.
It's on the police Facebook page. Pretty much.
All the dog.
Yeah. Thank you for those, yeah, it is much appreciated.
And they will also call.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've done that, too. We have a chip here.
Are there any other questions?
I have one. I may be missing it in the agreement, but where's the list of fees? What the costs are?
It gave the code, the county code, but.
Yeah, the only reference to fees or invoice of services is that we'll pay them in full within thirty days. And these in section seven talks about nothing in the agreement shall be construed to limit the right of King County or the municipality to increase or impose any fees or charges. I don't see what the current.
I don't think we get a choice but to pay what they give us a bill for. I think that's.
But in an agreement, shouldn't it list out what?
Yeah, this is an agreement that has been passed by every other municipality.
I understand they asked it. I don't know if they asked other questions, but in an intergovernmental agreement where there is an exchange of funds, you understand what the fees are, right?
You are kind of at their mercy in the fact that if we do not pass this, animal control.
Maybe the fees are established by ordinance.
Yeah.
With it, that can come.
That can come, yes. Yeah.
Says section five dash forty-nine A of the King County Code.
Right.
So that can be checked.
Which is probably, which I know, the fees escalate yearly. They do that as far as their budgeting process, and so by doing so, we agree to whatever their fees are.
Doesn't it ultimately go back to the dog owner?
In a lot of cases.
If there is one.
Right, that's what I said, in a lot of cases. If not, then we end up paying the bill.
Scripters here on page forty, just at the top, we have to add McHenry County, that one.
That was the template, so we'll make sure it's added before. We'll also make sure it's added on page forty-two on the ordaining or the resolving clause.
Do you have any other questions?
Right, because, well, it's kind of an interesting, this, this is, we're going to talk about this more than it really matters. Because if the dog is in McHenry County, is King County going to go there, right? So, but we will make sure that those changes are.
Okay.
Well, I guess, no, that's, that's the question. This is a King County ordinance. Correct. Is it necessary for us to list McHenry County? We'll, we'll list it. Okay. We'll list, we'll just list it for conformity's sake, but ultimately.
Does King County agree to provide those services in McHenry County?
They're multiple municipalities, they're multi-county municipalities that Metro West has negotiated this on behalf of. I think we have, how many acres in McHenry County?
Fifty acres and no roads or anything.
Which we talk about a lot for the amount of time that we actually talk, doing stuff on that. I think we just add McHenry County for conformity's sake, we go on very calm.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion approving a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement of King County regarding animal control services. So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Please, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson. Ms. Spohler. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
And Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Most of us six zero.
First, I'd like to say that Ms. Lyons is online tonight. If you have any questions for her, she is online with us, but don't believe we'll need her for anything. I'll mention it. So with that, the next four items are actually letter of credit reductions. They're not on a consent agenda. I did ask Mr. Khan to put the numbers on the agenda, but I'm not going to read all of them. The first one is, we'd ask your consideration of a resolution approving a letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhood K, L, and A. And Mr. Paulson is online. If you have any specific questions on the letter of credit reductions.
Just thirty thousand foot overview. Staff is comfortable with the resolution?
Yes.
And every other resolution for the letter of credit reductions?
Yes.
You have it to the work that's been performed and.
Yes.
Yes.
I just hit, just a simple question, I guess, but it's for K, L, and M, but there's only two letters of credit in this. Shouldn't there be three, or that one just isn't ready? So it's just two, but that's the area?
The, this, excuse me, for this subdivision, they posted two letter of credits, one for the grading and stormwater, which they started early, and then the second one was for all the utilities and roads. So they aren't per, by neighborhood, they're by engineering plan set.
Okay.
They just happen to have because they wanted to get an early start, but didn't want to post the whole thing at once. They posted two different letters.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions for neighborhoods K, L, and M? I'll entertain a motion approving resolution approving a letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhoods K, L, and N.
So.
Negative. Questions, comments? Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Spalastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
I'm going to read this one, and then I'm going to ask myself a question because it's the same letter. Now ask your consideration of a resolution approving letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhood N. So, Mr. Paulson, is this a duplicate, or is there a separate neighborhood N?
Well.
Or maybe a typo?
No, it's, it's correct. K, L, and M was, is the whole area south of, of Kelly Road in the, in the, when they did this. And so they did the mass grading and stormwater for M, K, L, and M all at the same time, along with the engineering improvements for K and L, which is a single family. Then they came back and did a separate engineering plan set for neighborhood M, which was the townhomes, because they had to do a separate plat for that to create the townhome lots and the improvements for the townhome area. So that's just the way they called their engineering plans sets. That's why it's K, L, and M in one, and then it's just M in this one. So this one is for that townhome area on the west and south side of Kelly Road.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions about neighborhood M? I'll entertain a motion approving resolution approving a letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhood M.
So moved.
Second, any other questions? Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Spalastrell.
Hi.
Most of us six zero.
Next on our agendas for neighborhoods T, Z, and Double A. We can review those. Do we have any questions?
What, Mr. Paulson, where are neighborhoods T, Z, and Double A?
That's the area north of Kelly Road, and T, Z, and Double A are on the east side of Harmony Road.
Oh, great. Any other questions? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please? Oh, wait, no, wait, sorry, I got to get it first and second. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'll entertain a motion approving the letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhoods T, Z, and Double A.
Thank you.
Thank you, I didn't want to take that from you guys. Any other questions? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palastrell.
Hi.
Did she say no?
No, I heard that.
Oh, I thought you said no, sorry. Okay. I, and then Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Most of us six zero, thank you.
Okay, next on our agendas for neighborhood J. Mr. Paulson, where's neighborhood J?
J is on the west side of Harmony Road, north of Kelly.
Any questions about neighborhood J or for Mr. Paulson about the letter of credit reduction? I'll entertain a motion approving a resolution adopting approving a letter of credit reduction for Prairie Ridge neighborhood J. So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Spalastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Spohler.
Hi.
Most of us six zero.
Next on our agendas for neighborhood R, which is where, Mr. Paulson?
Neighborhood R is the rental townhomes. North of townhome.
I'd like to point out that this is actually a acceptance of public improvements.
Not yet, it's not. Not yet.
Oh, yeah, that's one, sorry.
You can have that one. I'm just, I was just doing.
They go hand in hand, they've completed this one, so this reduction takes it all the way down to the ten percent, which would then be held during the maintenance period once the improvements are accepted under the following item.
Is there any discussion that needs to happen about accepting the public improvements, or can we do one motion right after another? Mr. Edges.
I know, as far as working center, they've both been reviewed by staff, and we recommend.
Does the, as long as we're talking about neighborhood R in its entirety at this time, does the board have any questions for Mr. Paulson about the public improvements?
Everything's fine, you've passed through everything, and.
Yes, we did a, we did a final punch list out there. There were a few things they corrected. We also, I also coordinated with both Dave Starett and Mark Montgomery to make sure they did not have any concerns about the public improvements.
So the punch list was done a couple months ago, they fixed everything, and.
Yeah, they fixed the final thing sometime early September, yeah.
Okay. September. Thank you.
You can hurry.
Okay, so we, I haven't called for motion yet, but what I, what my intention is to do is I'll call for a motion approving the letter of credit production, and then right afterwards, I'll ask for a motion approving the public improvements, just so the board is aware of where my head is. So I'll entertain a motion approving the letter of credit reduction for neighborhood R.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, and/or concerns? Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Palastrell.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Solder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Most of us six zero.
And being that we just discussed the public improvements, I'll entertain a motion accepting the public improvements for neighborhood R. So.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Spellstraining.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Solder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve the 2025 Village Board meeting schedule. And I believe in your packet, you have a copy of those dates.
There's two dates that I think we need to discuss.
Sure.
One, July third, that puts July fourth on a federal holiday on Friday, and many people may be out of town, so just putting that out there.
I didn't see that. Let's uh. So I think last year, as we talked about this. So if you look at like January, I don't want to take your thunder, but if you look at January, we only scheduled one meeting because we found it's like it was always hard for us historically for everybody to get together for traveling and that kind of thing. Would staff be okay with only having the one meeting in July? With the understanding that if something happened, the board as well, with that we would call a special meeting if necessary.
Yes, we don't have any particular business in July that's urgent typically.
What's your what's your other date?
The other date is June nineteenth, because that's a federal holiday, it's Juneteenth. I don't know if it's a holiday that the village takes, but I know it's a federal holiday.
Can I go back to the July third?
Yeah.
We discussed that one. If if um the entire board is out of town, I'm not gonna have an emergency meeting.
No, we we would schedule it.
At a different.
At a different week or something like that. If there was a if there was a need to have a meeting, we just understand that, okay, so like in January, and I'm okay with if the board wants to do this too. I'm okay with skipping the June nineteenth meeting as well.
I think that's a federal holiday.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, with with an with an understanding that if there's business that needs to happen, the board just needs, we're gonna have to schedule a meeting. Or is the board okay with that, with striking those two meetings?
If, you know what, if if I could just make a suggestion, because we're gonna not have one at the beginning of July, what what if we skipped because of June nineteenth and maybe June twenty sixth?
Okay, I made it in between.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so we can make sure all bills are paid and it's before the holiday.
The only thing I'd be concerned about is people are accustomed to the first and third Mondays, and a lot of our residents might they may not be aware that we had.
So we, and to his.
It's certainly legal, it'd just be a matter of.
To his point, when we used to have, when Coon Creek used to be the first weekend in first week of August, we would always move it. And then it would always confuse everybody, which is why we take the taking the approach in the last few years because of travel and all this other stuff. That we just skip it and then we put it on staff to say, hey, we have a lot going on and we're gonna have to call that meeting. So this way, at least we're not canceling a meeting, we're not canceling a scheduled meeting, right? We're just not having one. But then as long as the board is understanding that in June or July, if there's a need for that second for us to have a meeting on the twenty sixth, it would just be a special board meeting.
So, sorry, you had said something, and I don't know if that's what you meant, or if it is. You said we wouldn't cancel the meeting, we just wouldn't have the meeting.
If we don't adopt it as a date today.
It just doesn't exist.
Meeting doesn't exist.
Right, okay, so you're not saying keep it on there and then not have it, you're saying just remove it.
I'm just saying remove it, and then if there's a need for a meeting on that twenty sixth date, as it comes, I mean, the staff will tell us.
Yeah, I I with what Trustee Paul Strainy was saying, and I I do understand and respect the first and third Thursday motion. If we did, depending on how the board feels, if we did remove the third and potentially the nineteenth, you're over a month between meetings. Which seems like a really long time to be between meetings.
It would be a maybe a challenge for payables.
Right. So that's why I wonder if moving just that June to that off cycle week, it then solves that.
You seem like you're biting your tongue.
No, you can't technically hold a meeting on a federal holiday if it's a regular scheduled meeting, you can't schedule a special meeting on a holiday under the Open Meetings Act. If I may, in other communities, a lot of communities that I represent go to a one meeting a month schedule in the summer. And they will approve. Well, it'll be easier talking about financials, but that's okay. They approve all regularly occurring bills on June the fifth to be paid before July seventeenth. And they allow for payroll to go through and insurance premiums if they're due and all that to go through. I am not promoting that, that is a public policy decision of this very wise board. It's a way to solve that problem if it comes up. But the nineteenth, you could hold it on a federal holiday, that's again, policy decision. On the Open Meetings Act, what we couldn't do is come back and say, we're gonna have a special meeting because it's not on our regular meeting schedule, so keep that in mind. And there was a wolf figure out a way on the bills, because we've done, I've done it in other places, there is. Ms. Lyons, would you like to add anything about payables?
Um. Not really. On July third, we don't have hardly any payables from the end of the month from June anyway, so it's always tricky when the when the beginning of the month is, you know, is so close to the first. So I I like Jimmy said, I I believe, Mr. Vaselli, that we can work around the schedule if you only have scheduled the June fifth and July seventeenth meetings.
But Ms. Lyons, you'll have, you will have from from June sixth to July sixteenth. No, nothing approved, so there would be no bills that would be paid during that period of time, so it's not just one meeting loss because it's two.
Well, I think that's what Mr. Vaselli was saying, is you could move on the fifth to approve payables through the sixteenth of July.
You, regularly, what we do is we'll do regularly occurring bills, so insurance premiums. Unless there's a construction payout that we know is coming, there's a set amount. And again, I don't overcomplicate it, I keep it simple, obviously payroll, we want to make sure people come to work, it's a good thing. And, you know, if there's a copier cost that comes in every month, we approve the regularly scheduling bills. And then go to the seventeenth, we pick up any of the the loose ends. But again, I don't, if it's adds over complicating it, I try not to overcomplicate this and try not allow everyone to respect both the national holidays and travel plans.
What we would likely do if we had a major, the reason we might call a special meeting during that time is if we had a major project that needed approval by the board, something over twenty five thousand had to be authorized. Maybe an emergency law, well, it's an emergency, you don't need to authorize it in advance. But if we have something that we're ready to spend money on, a big project, then we'd probably ask for a special meeting. But otherwise, we should be.
My thought process is is we could try it and see if it works. If it doesn't, we won't do it again. If you guys are really, if this board wants to schedule a meeting on the twenty sixth of June, then let's put it on the calendar now and be done with it. But I mean, at the end of the day, I I'm comfortable with staff being able to figure this out and keep the village working. And just know, I mean, and we've been, we've had special board meetings, every one of us has had special board meetings, and we just know that there's that, there's that risk.
I honestly, I'm uncomfortable with that because we're going from graduation and all the stuff that goes on at that point all the way through till after the Fourth of July into where we're kind of coming down at the end of the summer at that point then. And that's, I just think that's a long time without having a meeting, even just for this board to get together to hear what's going on. To find out from the police that there's issues in the village. I I understand that it may confuse people because it's a different date. Couldn't we put in parentheses fourth Thursday after that one with the notation because of the federal holiday? And that way it's on all of our calendars, so we're not scrambling. You know, if we if we can cancel it, we'll cancel it, but at least it will be set and people will have it, we will have it on our calendars and prepared to be.
Certainly, you don't want to meet on the nineteenth of June.
I I think it's a federal holiday.
Doesn't matter.
There's no, there's no requirement that you, we could meet that, it's your choice.
Doesn't matter to me.
I feel like we've met on other holidays.
Yeah, we have.
Federal holidays?
Yeah, I I really feel like, I really feel like we have in the past, that we can pull, we can pull the meeting dates and stuff, but I really feel like there have been a lot of holidays that have been bank holidays and everybody's been closed, but we've had to come in and work, so.
My personal feelings on federal holidays, we shouldn't.
Fair enough.
Staff come in and shouldn't. That's just my personal.
It's not.
That is not a village holiday.
It's not a village holiday.
Yeah, village workers will be working.
Yeah. Juneteenth is federal, but we still have the option as to schools.
Yeah, the school, it don't matter to you guys.
So what what are we doing with the nineteenth? Are we gonna keep it or are we gonna move it to the twenty sixth? Okay, so so there's three options on the table, is cancel the nineteenth. Who's in favor of that besides me?
Me.
Okay.
You say cancel, I was saying not meet on the nineteenth.
I'm saying not meet on the nineteenth. Okay, and then what do we do? Okay, so we're not gonna meet on the nineteenth, now what do we do? Do we just not schedule one, or do we schedule one for the twenty sixth?
I think Trustee Paul Strainy's suggestion that we schedule one on the twenty sixth, and if we don't meet it, then you know, call it off. But it's, at least it's scheduled, people know, we let them know well in advance.
Okay.
We've got several water pills between now and then.
Fair enough, if we have something that comes through planning and zoning, or business needs a variance or something, obviously.
So, so the June nineteen meeting will be moved to the twenty sixth, and we are going to strike the July third meeting, so there will only be one meeting in July.
And can we put in parentheses then for Thursday?
Yeah.
Just to make it clear that.
Absolutely. Any other concerns with the meeting dates? I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting dates with June twenty sixth, or June nineteen changed to the twenty sixth and removing the July third date.
So.
And it's.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Awesome. Next is the holiday schedule.
Probably shouldn't have this in your order, because.
No, for next, no, that's what I was gonna, I'm sure you were bringing that up too, that's a federal holiday, I feel like we shouldn't be closed.
Well, June nineteen.
So is Columbus Day and.
Columbus Day is not a federal holiday.
So is uh, so is uh, what what is?
It is a federal holiday, it's just called something else.
But indigenous people, it is federal though?
Yeah, I believe so.
But the stock market was open.
Yeah, as was, as were other municipalities in other states. So is uh, is the.
We don't get Martin Luther King's birthday off, for example.
And election, and election day is is a federal holiday now, is it not?
It is.
That was by other one election day.
And we're still here.
Martin Luther King Day is not a village holiday here, right?
And President's Day, and then in twenty twenty five inauguration day is also a federal holiday.
There's a lot.
So, but yeah, the other thing to keep in mind here, the other thing, the only thing to keep in mind is the dates that we have set, we are the police contract, so if we choose to put another date onto this calendar, then we have to.
I really would encourage you to hold that for the budget discussion, because any any kind of additional holidays are costing money to the village.
So.
I will remind you that Veterans Day was added two years ago.
I, yeah, I was part of the police contract, correct?
So it's. So it's.
So I I would, I I kind of, with Mr. Edges, if you feel that there's a holiday on here that that we need to observe, I will say that we should bring that to the Budget Committee for adoption, and then we can bring, negotiate with the police union as well.
I feel we need to bring up June nineteenth.
The Budget Committee. Fair enough. I mean, I I'm just saying, but we can't, we can't, I guess we could do it now, but I, the proper procedure would be to.
No, right, understood.
Yeah, I think I would actually expand it and just say during the Budget Committee this year, so it wasn't one of the discussions we had, when we looked at budgets for salaries, I would recommend that we evaluate all of the federal holidays and just take a look with staff and staff leadership to say, what makes sense, what would that do for budget, what would that cost? Because there are multiple missing from this, it's not just the nineteenth, there's probably three or four missing from here that to Trustee Robinson's statement probably warrants the Budget Committee to have a larger conversation, because that's a larger impact than one day.
Yeah, and you also want to keep in mind what other surrounding communities do, and right now our twelve holiday, I believe it's twelve here, maybe eleven. Is in, in, is consistent with our surrounding communities. If we went to fifteen or sixteen holidays, I think that, I think that would be a lot right now, frankly.
But it's eleven holidays, it's your twelfth.
But, well, he said eleven.
What we have now, what we have now is consistent with surrounding communities, we're, we're in the middle of the pack.
Yeah, but I I'm okay if we if we say, look, it's a discussion for Budget Committee to see what the budget impact is with that, for all federal holidays.
Are we okay with the holiday schedule as presented with the understanding that we'll bring it up during the budgeting process?
Yes.
And this is the same that I have, then there's no changes, right, for strategies?
Correct, yeah. Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty five holiday schedule. So. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now on to everybody's favorite, staff reports. We have a wonderful police report and a streets report and a financial report, and we have got so many reports going on today. There's some pictures.
Somebody answering a question.
What about police car?
Nothing.
Come, have you guys seen?
She asked you a question on the report, just to make sure I understand what I'm reading. Under activity, on page one twelve of the packet, Hampshire Police Department, September scorecard.
Yeah.
On activity, we have number of traffic stops, number of traffic tickets and warnings. Should the tickets and warnings add up to the total stops?
No, not necessarily, because the tickets that would be caught, that would count for multiple tickets. So generally, there's gonna be more tickets than you have stops, I mean, more total count, because, you know, you might receive two or three on a traffic stop.
Gotcha.
Especially for the more significant.
That makes sense, like.
Yeah.
Get pulled over, you have multiple infractions, each infraction is considered a ticket, okay. What's your your instinct, or what's your thought, or if you know, that resulted in going from thirty nine out of a hundred and eighteen traffic stops, thirty nine tickets to a hundred and eleven traffic stops to a hundred and forty seven tickets?
The the main thing was that in um, in July, that that goes back to July for the previous month, because we had a couple months there where we didn't report, and so I just went back to the the previous report because they didn't make the scorecard each time.
Okay.
And in July, in July, it's vacation season, and so we were short staffed, there's, you know, there's, we had a bunch of things going on.
Yeah.
And now, you know, and then as we add more people, you're gonna see that, you'll see the numbers come up naturally.
No, I, what I meant was in the relationship between total number of traffic stops and the total number of traffic tickets. If you look, we had a hundred and eighteen in that period you're talking about, that resulted in thirty nine tickets. In the current month, we had a hundred and eleven that resulted in a hundred and forty seven tickets. It just seems like a, like the, there was a big change.
It would just depend on the, on the types of, you know, if we had a whole bunch of suspended drivers in one month, that would that would account for more of those.
So you're not, you're not looking at it thinking it's an anomaly, there could be a lot of different reasons. Okay.
Truck. Our item specialist also writes multiple tickets per stop as well.
And we're, yeah, we actually, right now, we have two truck officers.
Gotcha.
And so they're, and they're both pretty happy.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, if I could just ask, because I mean, you flagged it as well, the mental health calls for service.
Yeah.
And then we've got all the NAs, that's just something that we never really tracked before.
No, we we did, it's the the problem right now is we transitioned to a new records management system. And that data we pull from, we pull it from the state data once we submit it. So that that's where it's all counted, and rather than have the sergeant that prepared the scorecard go through and manually manually search for all these. And they're not, the system that we're looking at, they're not necessarily flagged.
Okay.
Where if we're pulling it from the state data, they're flagged. And so right now, we're not reporting to the state, because the because of the transition to the new records management system, the county was never reporting to the state ever. And now they, and now they are, but there's a three month trial period where you have, they have to submit three months worth of data with a, you know, two percent air rate or something like that, and then they can be approved, and we can't submit our crime data until they can submit theirs, because we're on a child system of theirs.
Okay.
It's kind of a, we were reporting it for the past several years, we've been reporting to the state and the FBI our crime data, which is what I normally pull that.
Is it the, I mean, because it's twenty four now, then year to date last year was was thirteen. And this data only takes you through the end of September, correct?
Well, that is actually probably, no, it's probably low, because because we're we're not counting September, we didn't.
Okay.
Year to date was actually prior to probably July, so we actually have had more, more mental health calls for service.
Okay.
This year, quite a bit more than last year.
So that was out of seven months, we have twenty four, and and year to date at that point is thirteen.
Correct.
For twenty three, okay. And just to follow up with that, are the mental health calls that we're getting, are they more like just to generally, are they children, are they teens, are they adults?
It's, it's a mix.
It's a mix?
Yeah, we have, yeah, and and there's, we have some repeat addresses.
Okay.
For all of those categories.
Okay.
Many of the mental health calls are repeat addresses, and then what we do is we work to bring in services to to those citizens, so you know, we can try to reduce that, but yes.
Okay, so you're not seeing like there's a trend with children or teens right now that you're concerned about? That's, that's all, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just point out on the as far as the goals accomplished, we did we did receive a almost a sixteen thousand dollar grant to help offset those casers that we bought out of budget. Could work out the budget and then yeah, doing people in training, and then the the new squad car, we've got real good feedback on that, I have, I don't think but one person doesn't like it that I've heard so far, so I'm sure there's more than that, but.
It's a scary.
Who, was it, was it one of your officers that don't like it?
Uh huh.
Was one of your officers?
He said nobody, nobody did it.
No, there was one officer.
Oh, there was one.
Oh, it's one officer?
Yeah, we have one very, that's too bad, change anything off.
That's too bad.
So is that the one that he gets driving?
He doesn't drive. It's okay for now.
Well, he's gonna hate to think what we're gonna get.
Yeah.
Chief, I know with new hires, after they come out of the academy, I think you had said at one time, it's like a year of infield training. Or in the, in the training in the field with a training officer. For the lateral officer that was sworn in, what, does that training, what difference the time period before they're considered?
Once they're back from, a new hire, once they're back from the academy, it's it's a fourteen program.
Fourteen weeks, sorry.
Yeah, and so in a, in a lateral transfer, it just depends on on the officer, where they've come from, you know. This particular Jerry Munoz, Munoz, he worked in, he worked in K County, so there's not nearly the transition for him.
Okay.
So it's it, but yeah, typically they're four, I would say four to six weeks.
So that's more on the discretion of the training officer and the leadership.
Right.
Okay.
And then we did complete a hiring process, I mean, I mean, the, excuse me, a testing process for new applicants. And we should be coming out with an eligibility list here in another week or two, once they apply to the military points and and we have, we'll be hired at least one for January. And so that'll bring us up to closer to that 16, and we're authorized it right now. We have 14 right now.
So we're we're down to like a bunch of it, okay?
Those two are additional, this this year.
Um, for the Streets Department, just want to know if this the sweeper that swept the entire village was before or after it needed repairs?
Uh, during, right, Mr. Hedges?
Yeah, I would say during. It was out working yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, so it's on the road.
Okay. And then for um, uh Ms. Lyons, is there anything that you would flag on the financial reports that's a little out of whack or that you think is a concern?
Um, nothing of super concern. Um, we're on target uh with respect to property taxes and. Obviously, some of our um. Our revenue is up due to um impact and transition fees uh on our new constructed homes.
It's spending is within budget in all the departments. At least overall.
Okay. Any other questions for the reports? Next, we have accounts payable. Uh, you'll see accounts payable personnel and two and the amount of $246 and. Forty-six cents. And any questions about the accounts payable personnel? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable to personnel amount $246 and 20. Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call, please?
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Spoder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
V P S.
Next, we have a small amount of $402,159 and 26 cents to be paid on or before. October 23rd, 2024. Lot of pages to go through here. Give you some time, because I'm sure there are going to be some questions. I was going to bring you down. Maybe I should just say, you know, so it'd be reflected in minutes. We should have voted against it, because the 246 was flown in the sewer. We should have denied it.
Oh, that sugar from the cake.
Yeah, gotta be.
Oh, there's, oh, for the board members that did not know, there's plenty of cake in the bag, so help yourself. Wait till you have 40 seconds.
Baked.
Um, I don't know who baked, but it was really good.
Okay.
I know, I know it was care of Miss Ture here.
I just have a question on page eight.
Page eight.
Kelly Williamson Company. $210 in car washes?
Yes.
What's that for?
For our first blood pairs. Is it, do you guys have like a like a monthly pass type situation or?
We do.
Yeah.
We have, so yeah, we we get the numbers, we get codes in advance.
Do they come out and wash your cars there?
No, no, no. We switched to, we switched from the from the car wash in 72 out to. Um, the one in Pingery, the Kelly Williamson in Pingery. Um, because. Because we like to, we get the works washed um for $6 a car wash. And then we control codes, so you don't, so the officers aren't washing their car every day. Because somebody would.
So in Pingery Grove, there's that mobile gas station on the corner.
Yep.
That that they have the car wash right there. But at least it's not, at least it's not $240 for one car wash, so we got that goal for us.
It's 35 launches.
Again.
Um, page 15, the Velon Solution, I'm sorry, no, Tyler Technologies, the Licensing Module Software. What was that?
That's our.
Nope.
Oh.
It's not.
I'm sorry. That's our, that's our license ranking, we have integrated with our business system. Um, it helps us with the.
Thanks, Lori.
Like a chicken license, liquor license, it helps with the um. Oh, solicitors, right? The solicitor passes and that kind of stuff. It's a, it's the ramp of licenses and stuff. Basically, we chronicle all of it. It's not on paper anymore.
Okay, is it, is that annual fee then?
I believe so.
Okay.
It is an annual fee and. Yeah, we're just uh starting, the software has been deployed, but we have not um implemented yet, so we're we're working towards that.
Right now, it's kind of an arduous process to keep track of all that stuff, so the module that we. As you know, we we we're moving into a new business system here in the village, and this is just one of the pieces. One of the reasons they picked Tyler, because it was expandable, and there was a module that did perform a function that would help us.
Okay.
In my defense, we're also using Tyler software. Now, the two, a couple of different pieces of software through Tyler, so.
Okay.
Trying to respond to that.
You could pay for it out of your budget, I guess.
We pay Tyler a whole lot more, I think, than you do. So.
No.
I don't believe so.
No, no, no.
I don't believe so. Yeah, sir. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable of $402,159.26. Please, so. Questions, comments? Walkover, please, Ms. Clerk.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Spoder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Go?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
S 6 0.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, now we have Village Board Committee reports. B D C?
Uh, B D C met on the night here at Village Hall. Uh, the main topic. For that day was. Regarding downtown signage. Um, the B D C is currently evaluating if. And how there should be restrictions on the size of signage for businesses in the downtown area.